I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
4.01 Public Comments on Agenda Items. The public comment period is a time slot set aside on the agenda for citizens to address the Board of Education. The open meetings law does not require that citizens be allowed to participate and speak at Board of Education meetings other than public hearings. The law specifies that the public has a right to attend board meetings except for executive sessions. The procedure for public comment is outlined in Board Policy 1230 Citizen Participation. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and a specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion. Compliments or complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comment. Interruption of board discussion is not permitted. In the interest of civility and respect for different points of view, outbursts from the audience, applause, or other types of disturbances or disruptions are not permitted. Under no circumstances will booing be tolerated. The Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to hear and respond to public comment. As stated in Board Policy 1230, the Board is not able to answer questions at the meetings, but welcomes your statements. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of the public through the use of the public comment form, which may be obtained online or at the desk with the district clerk. Responses will be provided within two business days on the district's public comment responses page so that everyone may receive the information. If anyone has a comment at this time, please come forward. Okay? Seeing no one, we will move on to 4.02 Communications and Announcements Received by the Board of Education. Mrs. Pelton. Mrs. Pelton. Mr. Slowshower.
As mentioned at the last meeting, there were some comments regarding IREDDI and PBIS. I had prepared some comments for PBIS during the Code of Conduct hearing. Unfortunately, prior to taking the position on the Board, I was unable to attend that meeting to express some of my views. I continue to do a little bit of research. I just want to share some very quick information if I could. My concern with PBIS has always been in regards to general education students. So the PBIS program is meant to get students thinking about appropriate behaviors and ask questions about why these expectations are in place. Few people want to think of themselves as promoting unquestioning obedience to authority, but a close look at PBIS reveals that that is exactly its mission. It is entirely devoted to making the rules very clear and then using tangible rewards to train kids to reflexively obey them, whatever they might be. It is 100% about obedience training and 0% about getting kids to think for themselves about what's right and wrong and how to behave. Scan their extensive website in vain for any evidence to the contrary. In my view, this is a horrible, harmful, and dehumanizing thing to teach children this kind of education. This kind of education you expect to find in an authoritarian state or dictatorship, not in a democracy. I know that in any school setting, there are, there will be inevitably be some emphasis on the importance of following instructions. But to make unquestioning obedience the entire focus of a child's, or excuse me, of a school's behavioral program to the complete exclusion of teaching the kids to think for themselves and to develop moral reasoning of their own is to do the kids an egregious wrong. It is anti-educational, anti-intellectual, and fundamentally inhuman. It's how we treat animals, not how we treat people. I certainly don't send my kid to school to learn that they should accept everything the teacher says or do whatever he or she commands, regardless of whether it is right or wrong. But that is exactly what PBIS is designed to teach, and I'm afraid it's exactly what they are learning. Of course, the program doesn't encourage kids to ask questions. There's no provision for it. It's just about rewarding good behavior as defined by those in authority. It's called positive because it emphasizes rewards over punishments, but they're just really two sides, sides of the same authoritarian coin. For regular education classroom teachers, giving rewards in exchange for good behavior, in my opinion, is a mistake. It is true that to do this and get that type of rewards can improve behavior in the short term, as in, "Sit up straight, give me your attention, and I will give you a sticker." Little Johnny, you can get the whole day without bothering, if you can go the whole day without bothering your classmates, I have a surprise for you after school. But incentives of this nature, which include earning class pizza parties, extra recess free time, and the like, don't benefit students in the long run and make classroom management more difficult. This applies to individual students as well as entire classrooms. For real lasting behavior improvement, focusing instead on creating a classroom that nurtures motivation, leave the bribery to trainers at C-WoL. Rewards turn good behavior into work. Rewarding good behavior sends the message to students that if they have to pay for it, then it must work. They logically conclude that being well behaved must be something difficult or noteworthy. Otherwise, why would they be rewarded for it? This effectively makes good behavior less desirable and more like an effort students deserve to be paid for. Rewards lead to entitlement. When you offer rewards in return for good behavior, you are creating a student a particular sense of entitlement. They feel entitled to receive something for merely doing what is expected. It leads them to believe that they're behaving and following rules and thus are owed something. After all, if you're getting a reward for it, there must not be anything in it for them. Rewards cheapen the motivation to behave. Being rewarded to behave cheapens the merit of being a valued citizen of their class. In other words, it puts a price tag on the prices. Some students are uncomfortable or are less than thrilled with public recognition, drummed-up rewards, or excessive praise. This is a person who already has strong, deep-rooted motivation, who would prefer that you didn't barter with them. Rewards can lead to more and more and more. When you put a price tag on good behavior by offering rewards, students will demand higher and more frequent payments. Rewards you see are not only ineffective in the long run, but they weaken over time. What is exciting at first, what's exciting and fun at first, loses, like extra recess, excuse me, becomes more boring and not a big deal after a while. Therefore, you have to continue to increase the payment or frequency of the reward. The ultimate reward for good behavior is its own reward because it offers students self-respect, confidence, and the wonderful feeling of belonging to a classroom school that needs and appreciates them. To deepen these feelings and to get students to want to behave for themselves and for the betterment, better, excuse me, and for the betterment of their classroom, schools stop, schools should stop rewarding them for good behavior. We need to stop interfering with the awesome power of self-motivation. Instead, we need to support it, encourage it, and feed it by creating classrooms in schools our students love coming to every day. It's the best reward we can give them. Now, some of those comments are my own and some of those comments I took from some research that I had done online. In a continued study that I had done, I came across something that I want to share. Rewards and consequences don't work. Right now, you may be thinking to yourself, "I've got a whole list of rewards and consequences in place to manage behavior." To be sure, nearly every classroom management book we have, will have a section devoted to the use of rewards and consequences. But there's one problem. Rewards and consequences don't work, or at the least, they don't teach. They may result in short-term changes, but in reality, they promote compliance and little else. Under rewards, you may be thinking to yourself, "I don't use punishments. My students earn rewards and privileges for good behavior." Some people think that bribing students with an ice cream social or a movie day when they behave is something better than metting out consequences when they don't. In reality, rewards and consequences are two sides of the same coin. Gee, that's funny, I think I just said that. Both are attempts to control students' behavior rather than teach them to engage in a productive learning. Tangible rewards have actually been shown to undermine motivation. Kotzner and Ryan, 2001. Rewards suggest to people that they are being compensated for engaging in an unpleasant obligation. Importantly, research shows that good behavior diminishes as rewards are phased out, according to Kahn or Kohn, 2010. Scores of studies have confirmed that rewards tend to lead people to lose interest in whatever they have to do to snag them. This principle has been replicated with many different populations across genders, ages, and nationalities, and with a variety of tasks as well as different kinds of inducements. Money, food, praise, just to name a few. Because students begin to lose interest in what they are doing over time, the number or value of the rewards offered to them must increase if they are to remain on task. Again, gee, I think I just said that. Consequences. Why do we punish students by metting out consequences when they misbehave? Probably because we are experiencing punishment as students ourselves. The most common punishment for students' misbehavior in elementary school is loss of recess. Morbly Waddle and Duff, 2005. Ironic, given that evidence has shown regular physical activity to reduce a problematic behavior and increase student achievement, Ratley, 2008. Another common punishment, placing students' names on a board and applying check boxes by those students' names. So, I don't want to take up any more time, but I got this information and I was fascinated that I read it from a book that was given to all the board members. Better Than Carrots and Sticks: Restorative Practices for Positive Classroom Behavior. I don't know if everyone read this, but we all got this book. So I find it interesting that comments that I had put together months ago for Code of Conduct seem to have popped up by a couple of experts in this field. So again, I'm not saying that PBIS is a program that we should not have within the district, but I do not feel that it's a program across the board for all students. That's not what this program was designed for, and I think overall, it does more damage to general education students and the student body itself over a long period of time. And based on what I prepared and read and what I see, the so-called experts in this book, they seem to agree with me. So I would ask that moving forward at some point, that Board can have some further discussion on PBIS within the school district. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Mrs. Carron. Mr. Galata.
I'd like to thank Mr. Carrion and the Central Office staff for donating the table skirt to the Board of Education Recognition Week. Like, it was very nice, thank you very much.
Yes.
And I'd also like to thank Mr. Ramirez and the Wappinghurst Junior High School Student Council for donating t-shirts to the Board of Education for Board of Education Week as well.
Yes. Yes, isn't this nice? We all got one, and we also got candy and goodies, which some people are enjoying right now. So thank you very much to the Wappinghurst Junior High Student Council. Mr. Lumia.
The comments by Trustees Slushower should be discussed further. I went to a meeting two weeks ago where one of our district administrators pointed the positive aspect of PBIS, which creates a school, a very positive culture in the school. So I think it's appropriate in the future to be able to discuss such topics.
Mrs. Goodwin.
Once again, I will say for the record that issues of classroom management belong to the teachers and the educational professionals. If the teachers say that they are not happy with it and that it's making their classrooms harder to manage rather than easier, and they don't think it's bad for the kids, they don't think it's good for the kids, then certainly, that's something we should take into account. But I'm aware of the research that you're quoting, and a lot of it has been discredited as applying only to a very small cohort of students.
Mr. Lumia.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to be a little more traditional in my statements. Had the pleasure of attending Career Day here at Wappinghurst Junior High School, along with Mr. Lumia, I forgot about it. But I didn't forget you, Mr. Lumia. It was a wonderful opportunity. There were hundreds of kids around, quite a number of display tables there, including, I think, Wappinghurst had a table there as well with Mr. Carrion. And I think that the kids enjoyed it, they got to see a little bit and talk with people about various special pieces around, and I thought that was just, it's a great idea. This is at least the second year that the school has had it, maybe longer, I hope they continue. Along with, again, along with Dr. Knack and Mr. Zip, I attended an award ceremony, the Decade Resources Award Ceremony. Decade Resources is a local organization that works to help assist handicapped people, make them more independent. It is a great organization, in my opinion. I had a great time with the two of them there. They are, and it shows, it shows this administration's commitment towards reaching out to the community and getting involved and seeing how we can better work with the resources in the community. Lastly, I had the opportunity today to go to the Fishco Plains Elementary School. They were having a blood drive from 3 o'clock to 7:30. The little doctors are there, those kids are great. They really are committed to helping the community, which in turn helps blood, people who need this, in all different aspects. The kids just felt a great commitment and a great satisfaction in helping the community. There will be other blood drives coming up shortly in various schools, and I hope the community has some time to go and donate blood. It's a worthwhile cause, I'm a donor. Thank you.
I was sorry to miss the Career Day here at Wappinghurst Junior High because I was attending a wonderful assembly at RC Ketchum, which just shows how we have so many wonderful things going on at the district all the time. And we could only wish that we were all able to attend more of them, but there are conflicts and also many people can't come during the day because they work full-time. Yes, we did. We worked out that some of us would go to the one and some to the other. And so I know Mr. Lumia and Mr. Ruben also would have liked to have gone to the assembly just as I would have liked to have gone to Career Day. But the assembly program is called Breaking the Cycle, and it was a program by people who have experienced the suicide of a child, the loss from a drug overdose of a brother, and personally almost dying by being shot with gun violence. And the stories were so compelling, and the gymnasium was filled with high school students, and you could have heard a pin drop. So it was a very worthwhile program. Mr. Carrion and the principals of Mrs. King from John Jay and Mr. Seif from Ketchum, and students from both of those schools, and I all attended a program at a workshop at Bosse's on the Every Student Succeeds Act and New York's response to it. So it was very interesting, and they're going to be having a public hearing for more comments, and they're trying to see how New York State should respond to how they can fulfill the requirements of the federal law, which has replaced the No Child Left Behind Act. And I'm sure Mr. Carrion can tell you all a lot more about it in detail, but it was worthwhile. Then I attended the Legislative Action Committee chaired by Mr. Slowshower. We're working, we were working on the letter that the Board asked us to provide. And finally, along with Mr. Galata, I went to the Math Carnival at John Jay High School on Friday, done by the Math Honors Society. I know my grandson had a great time, it looked like the other children were having fun too, and they learned a lot. Thank you. Did I learn anything? Well, I learned that a lot of kids are better at throwing balls than I am. I wasn't too surprised, though. All right, next, the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Carrion.
Thank you. I'm going to take the mic. As you can see.
As you can see, oh, good evening, Board of Education, community. Just wanted to thank all the seniors that are here today. I know you're here for your signatures, but this is your last year in public school, and I'm a broken record, I say this at every meeting. We're extremely proud of you, we want you to have a great year. We want you to be safe while you have lots of fun, and we continue to take your schoolwork very seriously. And we look forward to shaking your hand when you walk on this stage to receive your diploma. So good luck, have a great year, and don't forget to vote if you're 18 years old. Or old.
As far as the administration is concerned, well, first what I'm going to do is read the proclamation from the Governor, State of New York Executive Chamber Proclamation. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school districts in school districts throughout the Empire State. And whereas our state's public education system is designed to meet the educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to society and an ever-changing world, and whereas members of local school boards are dedicated to children, learning, and community, and devote many hours of service to elementary and secondary public education as they continually strive for improvement, excellence, and progress in education, recognizing that all children can be successful learners, especially when education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation to the district by working closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we all hold for today's students and those of the future. And whereas the members of New York State's local school boards respond to the educational needs of the communities they serve and help ensure the solid foundation of our school system, in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our state's educational system and improve future prospects for our children. And whereas during October 24th through the 28th, 2016, special activities and programs will be held in communities across New York State in observance of School Board Recognition Week, and it is fitting to join in acknowledging the commitment and contributions of members of local school boards. Now therefore, I, Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the New York, of the State of New York, do hereby proclaim October 24th through the 28th, 2016, as School Board Recognition Week.
And the font was tiny. As you can see, many of the senior staff team and other administrators, and as well as our district clerk, from our own personal, this is a personal gift, not from the taxpayers, but a personal gift that we have provided you with this skirt. And those of you, those of you who were a part of this gift, can you please stand up so that they can recognize you as well? Thank you. Now our President.
Cuomo wrote that, I find it very hard to believe, but if he signed it, somebody must have voted for him. But anyways, trustees, ladies and gentlemen, students, central and building administrators, members. This week has the Superintendent said his School Board Recognition Week in New York State. So we are here tonight to thank you. You are the educational leaders in our community. You determine the policies that govern the operation of the district. Your decisions are often criticized, but must be taken. We know that you devote many hours of service, partake in many committees, and continually strive for progress and excellence in education. On behalf of Wappinghurst Congress of Teachers, I would like to read a sort of proclamation as a sign of support and recognition to your dedication and service to our students, our members, and our community. Proclamation. Whereas each year, School Board Recognition Week is observed by more than 700 school boards in school districts throughout New York State. And whereas the men and women serving as board members of the Wappinghurst Central School District are educational leaders dedicated to our students. They devote many hours of service to our elementary and secondary schools as they continually strive for progress and excellence in education. And whereas the members of the Wappinghurst Central School District Board respond to the educational needs of the community they serve, and in doing so, these leaders help strengthen our educational system. And whereas during October 24th through the 28th, 2016, in observance of New York State's Board, of School Boards Recognition Week, the Wappinghurst Congress of Teachers would like to join in acknowledging the commitment and contribution of these dedicated educational leaders. Therefore, I, Pasqualina DeCarfini, President of the Wappinghurst Congress of Teachers, representing over 900 members, do hereby recognize and celebrate, as proclaimed by the New York State Executive Chamber, October 24th through the 28th, 2016, as School Board Recognition Week. Congratulations. And Madam President, I would like you to accept this plaque on behalf of the trustees.
Excuse me? Mr. Slowshower said we each should get to keep it at our house for a week.
This concludes the Superintendent's Report.
6.01 Budget Calendar Presentation.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to start the 2016-17 budget process. So this evening, we'll be having a brief presentation on the budget calendar and the process in general. Included in this most recent board packet, as well as added to the website, we've updated our terms for the 17-18 budget. I think I just said 16-17 budget cycle, I really meant to say 17-18 budget cycle, sorry about that. So we've provided the 17-18 budget financial terms and definitions. We've also set the dates for the Superintendent's Forum, Forum on Budget Conversation called the ABC Meeting, set from November 7th, 2016, and will be at RCK's library from 5:30 to 6:30. library from five-thirty to six-thirty. We will be also videotaping that session, and it will be available on the website. We have a meeting scheduled for February as well, and that information will be made available in the very near future. So the first step in our process is to start the discussion this evening, and we've already started pulling information for preliminary equipment requests, new staffing, curriculum proposals. You'll be seeing this on that calendar that we're asking you to review and include this evening. As we work through the process, we definitely refer to the Board of Education goals. We use estimates, we'll speak to those very frequently. We have an interactive process with the board, we'll have our ABC meetings. And then as we continue on through the process into January and February, we'll be presenting general support, instruction, transportation, and distributed portions of the budget. We'll be looking to the state for their funding estimates and answering questions all the while from any community member or board member as we move through the process. The seventeen-eighteen important budget dates which are noted on the budget calendar that was included in the packet include that those ABC meetings, both in November and February, and also the preliminary presentations to the Board of Education beginning in January. Already, we're talking about our April eighteenth deadline for the board approval of the seventeen-eighteen budget and the budget vote on May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. So that concludes the presentation on the budget process. Quick, simple, but it is a start, and the work is already begun. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? I'm Mr. Slow Shower.
I just have one question, and I would ask my fellow board members to once again consider this during the time we have some open time between February sixth and April eighteenth. You okay? Okay, I'm sorry. There are, there's some open time between February sixth presentation and our fall deadline for all vote on April eighteenth. I have mentioned this several times in board meetings in the last few years as a member of the community. The fact that we're having a budget hearing, which is mandatory by law, which I understand on May eighth, which must occur within thirty days before the official budget vote for the community, it still makes absolutely no sense to me that we're having a budget hearing after, after we have approved this, to then take comments from the public. I, I strongly feel we wish all the board members would consider that we either have a separate budget hearing, as we did a couple of years ago, where members of the community can express their concerns, or whatever opinions they may have with regards to the budget, concerns, suggestions, and whatnot, prior to the board voting. There's a chance that community members may have some important information that they can share with us that we should take into consideration before approving the vote. It was, it is within the board's purview to schedule a board hearing, excuse me, a budget hearing prior to a vote. I've discussed this with members of legal counsel at NISBA. They happen to agree with me. It doesn't make any sense, just because other school districts happen to do this. And as I said earlier, we've had a public hearing about two years ago, prior to the vote. I think it's something we should consider. We should give the community an opportunity to express their viewpoints on the budget prior to our vote. Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Mrs. Karat.
Yes, I agree with that. As a new board member last year, it struck me that to have the budget hearing after the, the board has adopted the budget, but before it gets put to the public, seemed to run counter to what local governments do in terms of their proposals or projects and their budget. Any hearings they have, they will have it before the board itself meets to decide how they're going to, to go on the issue. And I'm not sure if it was just something, it was a misconception years ago that it would fall before the, the public vote.
And the date is driven by New York State for the mandated hearings? And in the past, there were two hearings, but several years ago, when this, when the caucus was stopped, it was because of the availability of the microphone time during public board meetings. Plus, we also have the superintendent's forums where we feel that, we felt that we would be meeting the needs of the community, and we have the constant email that nobody uses, but it is available, starting already. We still check in every day, and that was the opportunity for us to provide feedback.
So, so the date is mandated, and it runs in sync with the actual public vote?
Board of members, Madam President. We have five minutes on this on the schedule, and we need you five minutes.
Okay, does anyone wish to continue discussion? Mr. Lumia.
Yeah, I'd like to give at least five more minutes or any other comments?
Five minutes, and we have a second. Mrs. Karat, all those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, go ahead. Mr. Lumia.
I have to concur with Mr. Slow Shower. I think there should be a public hearing prior to the board's vote. It makes sense. I appreciate what the superintendent does so far as going to the various schools, but unfortunately, not many will show up during those meetings. And I think it's very important that the people can express their opinion and kind of board meetings. And I'm sure, I'm sure they will come during the board meetings. So I concur with everything that Mr. Slow Shower has said.
Mr. Carrion, is, Mr. Carrion, is it possible to schedule a public hearing before a board meeting in, say, February, March? Okay, whenever you thought it might be.
Sure, we'll make sure that there will be an additional hearing for the Board of Education. And the public hearing, we will have the superintendent's forum as well. The superintendent's forum, as we've noted, those of you who attended the T R two transportation superintendent's forum, really provided more of a Q and A experience, where a public hearing is not a Q and A. So it needs for a conversation, but nevertheless, we would be willing, happy to schedule an additional public hearing for the Board of Education if that's what they design.
Okay, so maybe we have a public for, a superintendent's forum and a public hearing instead of going to all the schools? Would that work better?
No, no, I don't go to all the schools. I have a superintendent's forum. Once the board approves the budget, that's what we call the, the roadshow, and that's when we do twenty-six plus presentations by the time of that. So, but if that's the will of the board, we can just amend, amend the resolution slightly to say that an additional public hearing will be reflected, but that has to get the process, which is somebody would think that.
All right, did someone want to make that resolution? Mr. Lumia.
I'll make a resolution that prior to the budget vote, we do have a fact of public hearing on the budget.
We will, we will determine it because we have the.
Okay, second, do we have a second for the resolution? Mr. Slow Shower. All those in favor? Mrs. Pendleton, Mr. Slow Shower, Mrs. Karat? It's unanimous. Sometimes people are slow to raise their hands, so I'm not too sure. That's all right, I'm not rushing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Crandall. All right, yeah, we have some light until we get to the next presentation, because we have to approve the budget development calendar. Thank you. As amended, yes, we will. Six point zero two, approval of the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen budget development calendar.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the budget development calendar for two thousand seventeen three thousand eighteen as detailed, excuse me, in a memo dated October seventeenth, two thousand sixteen from the Executive Director of Finance and Business Development to the Superintendent of Schools, as amended.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Slow Shower, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Six point zero three, change in school start time.
So, the change in school starts, starts time, after reading that proclamation, the change in school start time, and I'd like to take this opportunity versus to say that although it wasn't the largest turnout at the superintendent's forum to have the conversation with parents, it was the opportunity that parents had and took advantage of the forum to make sure that they asked all the necessary questions. So what we did was, we worked it out where parents could provide recommendations, ask questions, and share their concerns. And from, from that conversation, this is a feedback we're taking, from the dashboard cameras on buses, make start time change at the secondary schools as late as possible, flip elementary and secondary school start times, middle school and elementary schools on the same tier, elementary, elementary schools, Myers Corners Elementary School students, another transition, additional traffic congestion down Hill Beach Road and Myers Corner Road, ridership, why so many counted drop-offs and pickups on bus load? Students sit on buses in front of the school prior to the vote for several minutes and concerns about bus pickup and drop-off information being provided too late, for example, of all this. So because of the superintendent's forum, we, we began immediately to do work with the notes that were gathered. Those notes are also posted on our district website. The minutes were taken. Ms. Watkins took the minutes, and they are posted on our district website. What we then started to explore is how can we make our high schools start as late as possible? We were really trying to shoot for seven-thirty for students to enter the building at seven-thirty instead of seven-twenty-five, but the parochial schools and their schedule really would not allow even for those additional five minutes. However, our students presently enter the building at seven o'clock in the morning now, which that's a twenty-five minute difference, which I think it's pretty significant to have a twenty-five minute difference of where the students were to enter the building. The reverse happens for Wappanjus Junior High School and Van Royden Junior High School. They will be entering the buildings twenty-five minutes earlier as opposed to seven-fifty, seven-twenty-five AM. Myers Corners Elementary School students enter the building at seven-fifty AM. All elementary, excluding Myers, students enter the building at eight-fifty AM, which we've seen this in, I mean, a lot of these presentations, but the idea would be to have all students at the elementary level, all-time schools, starting at eight-twenty-five AM to enter the building. The community forum, right now at John J. High School and Mercy House Chalmers High School, first period begins at seven-seventeen AM, and the bus departure is four fifty. First period will begin at seven forty-two AM, and the bus departure will be two-twenty-five PM. And the same thing would happen with Wappanjus Junior High School. They, the bus departure presently is at two-fifty, and first period begins at eight o'clock, and their first period will begin at seven-thirty, and their bus departure will begin at two-twenty-five. Myers Corners first period begins at eight AM, bus departure. And we use, I, we should have put that first period in quotes because, as we all know, elementary schools typically don't work by periods, but we're just trying to give you an indication of when education, when instruction was rolling at the elementary level. So all elementary schools right now, past begins at nine AM, and the bus departure is at three fifty. The proposal is to have it start at eight-thirty-five AM, and bus departure will be, be twenty-five PM. So as I shared already, we made the start time later to private board hears for the start times. And really, even the additional five minutes, I have to say that the entire transportation team, our executive director, Mrs. Crandall, assistant superintendent, Kieran, Marano, and my other team, really worked to see how we can really try to stretch that, right? But we got twenty-five minutes, and, and that's great for the conversations, how we get this, and we started this conversation, and that's a good one that we received at the forum. So, sitting in front of the schools, one, one of the things that I shared with the team was that the, the sitting in front of the school has been going on for many, many years, and I've shared this before, some, some buses really arrive to our high schools early at six forty-five or now, or closer to six fifty, but some do arrive at six forty-five. And I, I spoke to Mrs. Crandall and said, this has got to stop, even if the status quo remains, and we need to think about even finding money, let's say, to have, if there's four buses that are consistently that early, to, to, to pay a monitor or a school security officer to house them in the cafeteria, and then in seven o'clock time, they can be released from the cafeteria. That's not atypical in many schools, where certain buses arrive early and students are released from the bus. Presently, right now, they can't be released from the bus because the actual school day with teachers starts at seven in the morning. So that's, that's an issue we want to rectify, but we also want to rectify it long-term in terms of the buses, if, if we're going to change the start times in our school. So flipping elementary and secondary school start times, it's not feasible at this time to communities and secondary schools. We, as I said before, we need other school districts to join, and we have this conversation. The district does not have enough vehicles to support elementary and high schools on the same tier, cannot have all schools on the same tier. This work was completed in the fall two thousand fifteen. I do understand that I believe your work is going to improve on its forward time. So, Spencer, the community forum also, this particular by the local municipalities, we also had a meeting, uh, we, hi, many of our local municipalities come, and it was a great meeting, a lot of conversation went on. Ms. Crandall, do you want to comment?
So we invited local municipalities, county, state-level elected officials to have a conversation with us on October twelve, that we provided them a fact sheet, that gave them the basic facts as to how we were supposed to do. Not as many of you as all of you attended as we would have hoped, but we did have a good turnout and conversation for a long hour. We provided the fact sheet as well as the attendance sheet and the minutes from that meeting, and we have reached out to, for example, one of the things I would have shared that for snowballs, maybe we should be calling the local lawn person. So we've sent letters out to the local lawn person because the towns are either not in yet or only on the roads cleaning the wood and making calls. So we are, we are going to be quickly creating a conversation with the local town that's moving forward as an example for the conversation to move forward. We have looked into the ridership and why are there so many parent pickups, drop-offs? A lot of times that we provided that information in the past, but we asked again the administrators for any feedback that they had, and they're not always being aware of why parents drop off or pickup. But we have looked at that information and tried to compare it to what we had in the past to see there isn't a big difference. we had in the past, to see there isn't a big difference. But I can tell you, between the audits and the morning of those school vehicles who arrive, some school drop-off and pickup drop-offs are just amazing, the number of cars that are in and out of those buildings, in addition to the school vehicles that came together in the morning. And as we were speaking about the audit, we completed that on October twenty-first, attended the arrivals, or the transportation team and myself over the previous days. We, as superintendent, indicated, we will be using this information immediately to address what currently occurs in the morning, regardless of there are any changes during the seventeen eighteen year. We will be providing information, sample routes, on the website by the start of the second semester, so by January, there will be sample routes, that is a concern for parents that we were going to be getting information too late in the year. The final information will be available till August, but there will be sample routes available for parents to see what the impact is for the change in start time. But it is our, our belief, that if schools starting twenty-five minutes earlier, your bus will be picking you up twenty-five minutes earlier, or vice versa twenty-five minutes later, your bus will be picking you up twenty-five minutes later. So in January of two thousand and sixteen, we discussed scenario, well, we discussed several scenarios. Scenario four was the best-case scenario, this does not change. From that conversation in January, we continue to route this work and look for any ways that we can find more efficiencies, but this is the best that we have needed to do at this point in time. As recently, just as party afternoon, we spent several hours, we took a little rough sound conversation. So the next step is, includes a resolution for November seventh, that puts out the rule to approve the change in start time for the seventeen fourteen school year, and we feel that if that conversation and that vote moved around that date, it will provide, um, training for families, community, staff to transition, as well as a very much process for the budget for the seventeen fourteen school year. Thank you.
Just a little, I don't know what page it is, but it states that, may incur additional costs since route routes exist, but this needs to be addressed with that implied.
This was regarding the students in the morning that the superintendent spoke to, sitting on the vehicles, starting as early as six forty-six, six forty-seven.
There's also, we, we have a letter from some concerned parent, once again stating, I know you already stated this before, but I want you to restate again, the instructional time is going to decrease by thirty minutes, you already stated otherwise, I'd like you to confirm that, please.
I, the, the instructional time will not decrease. As a matter of fact, the work that we're doing, as a result of this work, is really looking at the instructional time, so as I shared with the board before, we have sent out surveys to principals at the elementary level. Ms. Crandall is visiting the schools and physically looking at schools, what time they arrive, what time some of our vans are leaving in the afternoon. So this is something that hasn't folded, that has been going on for years, and my philosophy is that if you can exit a building in two minutes for a fire drill, you don't, we don't need to have a long, drawn-out dismissal process. And if it's happening in certain schools, what we're going to ensure, that's not going to be negotiable, and then it ties into Dr. Cardwell's work, and one of her goals this year is how are we looking at our core content areas, our core core content areas at the elementary level, in terms of the number of time, the amount of time for instructional science, social studies, as well as E.L.A. and math. So this is really like, kind of, just unveil things that we're just really working as an entire team and dealing with different issues to really kind of answer.
Thank you, Mr. Lumia.
One last thing, and the form and teacher, I wish high school kids started much later, but as indicated, it would definitely affect that school activities, that some of the kids are involved, and so, it should be reversed, I agree, that the kids that, older kids don't want to stay up late, but the twenty-five extra minutes will make a big difference, especially during first period.
Yes, yes, it's also, I'll say, as a retired elementary school teacher, and as a grandmother, little kids get up early, my grandson, who was in third grade, is the first one up every day, and so, you know, earlier starts are good for them, too. I had a couple of questions, one of them was about the, this whole issue of children's, students sitting in a bus in a parking lot for a long time, it relates to when they are actually picked up. The board policy is that they shouldn't be on a bus longer than forty-five minutes, and is there any way to reduce the number of students who are picked up in the dark? This is a safety issue, and it's a great concern.
It's all part of the work we're doing right now, Mrs. Crandall, so we're looking into it, we're checking to see, we're, we need to compile the data, we only just finished on Friday, so we're working on it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Rubin. Oh, Mrs. Karat.
Mrs. Crandall, will that include the possibility of looking at the routes that are, the drivers are so efficient, that they're getting their routes completed that early?
We need to look at multiple factors, and another factor is, some of these vehicles that are there early need to be the first ones out of the parking lot to take their second tier, which take them up onto Stormville Mountain, for example. So those are the buses that we're really looking at, to see, to make sure those are the ones that are early, those students would be offloaded as a possibility.
There's a reason that they're there.
Absolutely, and that's what we're trying to confirm.
Because they have to be first in line to exit.
And that's what we need to confirm, so we're, that's one of our areas of concern.
That's totally reasonable.
Okay, Mrs. Goodman.
I was at one of the elementary schools a couple of weeks ago, and the staff is universally in favor of the bus time, the changed bus times, because they have a lot of kids being signed out early for after-school activities, and it's not Myers Corners, just so that, you know, which already ends, I think, rather late. Are the building principals, they, obviously, when a parent signs out a kid, they, there's a record there. Can we get any sense of how much time, instructional time, students are losing as an aggregate, because they are being signed out early, and how this new schedule might alleviate some of that?
We did not ask for what time they were being signed out, we asked if they were being signed out, and for what reason, if they could compile that data. So again, that's something that we could do, but, you know, an earlier start time, or earlier end time for those elementary schools should alleviate getting to CCD, getting to gymnastics, getting to soccer, getting brothers and sisters to where they need to go, so.
This has also been, as I said, Pandora's box, because I haven't been a principal in an elementary school in over ten years, but what I can tell you is that, at one point, I had to put a stop on fourth and tenth to a cutoff time, because it's safety also, and parents are coming in at the end of the day to try to pick up their students, right when other buses are arriving, so one of our schools does it right now, where they do that right now, they, pardon me, they actually have a cutoff time, so that parents can't come after a certain time to pick up their students during this dismissal process. So parents would know, let's just say, if they, dismissal starts at, I'll make life easy right now at two, that no later than one thirty, if you want to pick up your child for an appointment, or anything else like that. In addition to that, the, another, another issue, too, is that, and it's very, and this is a, this is a safety issue, and we do customize many dismissals for students to change their buses, and letters are coming in, and my child needs to ride this bus going home with this person, where many school districts do not allow for that, at all. They allow, it's, it's not a, it's not a service, it's transportation to and from school.
Mrs. Goodman.
I just want to, a quick follow-up, which is basically, what I'd like, what I'd like to examine, if it's possible, is not just, we think it will help, but if you can get a handle on how much it will help, okay? You said you have not the times, but the reasons that the parents pick up.
For some of them, yes, some of them, we don't have reasons.
That's, that's fine, just to give a sense of, especially if there are kids being picked up five or ten minutes early, once a week for the entire school year, that's a big loss of instructional time. So I think we should get a handle on that.
And to add to that, having taught that, if you have four or five children being picked up early, that kind of truncates your lesson, because you don't want to, you want to make sure that you're past any new introduction, you want to make sure you made, went through, make sure everybody had their backpack, et cetera, et cetera, and it's very disruptive. Yes, we need the time, yes. Right, could we have a motion to continue discussion, because I still see hands? Mr. Slow Shower.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, I was gonna, I'd like to make a motion extending for another fifteen minutes.
Fifteen, do we have a second? Mrs. Karat, all those in favor? Mr. Slow Shower, Mrs. Karat, Mr. Galetta, all those opposed? Mrs. Pelton, Mr. Lumia, Mr. Rubin, Mrs. Kelland, and how did you, and Mrs. Goodman, are you subsisting?
No, I thought it was in favor of extending.
Okay, so that was four to four? Okay, so if someone would like to make a motion for a shorter length of time?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Okay.
I'll change my mind, okay? I'll go break your table.
Ten minutes.
All right, do you want to go for ten?
Ten minutes.
Ten, okay, for ten, do we have a second? Mr. Lumia, all those in favor for ten? Unanimous, okay, thank you. Mr. Slow Shower.
You may have already answered this question, but just for clarification, did we look at just changing the high school start time to a little bit later, because obviously the safety and possible snow days is most important? Was that feasible, or not feasible?
We got to seven twenty-five.
Yes, but without changing anything else, just staying on the, do we look at a three-tier just moving the high school start times only?
I see what you're saying.
Just to satisfy, so, okay.
We would remember.
Or even do the.
I'm sorry, yeah, the parochial, the parochial's with the junior high school.
Okay, and I know we were looking into, and some parents have mentioned with regards to feasibility for traffic, and I don't know what additional information was received, but, you know, just on that corner, the Odyssey Diner has recently opened up, Dunkin' Donuts is now there, Chase Bank, new signage, you can't take a left turn out of the Hattieford Shopping Center, I don't know, we've taken those things into consideration just for traffic. The other thing is, I know we, I mentioned last time, and you had said the survey went out to the high school students, and I know there were some partial results that was provided to the board, but I'd like to know how many students actually participated, you know, what were those specific questions? And some students unfortunately were claiming that they never received the email to participate, so I'm just trying to gauge if we got a true indicator, did we get a hundred students answer the survey, or did we get three thousand students answer the survey? And then my last question is, which I emailed to administration, is with regards to moving forward, if the board does at some point have a discussion about universal pre-K, and that is a direction that the district goes in, how would those students be affected? What tier would they be on? Would that be a two-day, excuse me, a morning and an afternoon? How would the logistics of a two-tier system factor in if we went through universal pre-K? How would those students get to school? And there's another question, do we have room for that, but that's a different topic, but would there be room for them on the bus? And how do we get all those students in in the morning? Are we going to do a morning-afternoon like we did previously before full-day kindergarten?
So, very, very, very few schools have a full-day pre-K program. Very few schools have a full-day pre-K program, sorry. Most school districts that bring in universal pre-K have a two-session program, an A.M. and a P.M. The transportation is rather unique for a pre-K, because universal pre-K, you would have to have car seats, there's a certain amount of students that go on the bus, you can't, you can't have the students, I believe, mixing in with all of the other students. The work is being done for universal pre-K, which will include the transportation component, and the Dr. Cardwell, that's, wow, I'm spilling all your business here, that's another one of her goals, and that's one of the workshops we will be sharing with the board.
Just a quick follow-up, so that's going to, that's going to increase cost, because we're going to have to make additional transportation available in mornings and the afternoon.
Yes, that would, that would increase anyway.
No matter what.
No matter what.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you. I concur with you about Mrs. Crandall, she is, she's a real agenda, seems no matter what time I call or send her an email, two o'clock in the morning, at two o'clock in the afternoon, she responds very promptly, so kudos to her. I just, correct me if I'm wrong, although this is presented simultaneously, we're really looking at two issues here concurrently, the change in start times and a two-tiered process, that the board's responsibility would end at, start and end with the school, length of the school day, the start length, the length of the start time, it's administrative responsibility of the kids.
That's scheduled.
I had a question, I'm a little confusion on the chart here, I know it's from the scenario four last year, but it says here, private and parochial north side routed separate to Saint Mary's Wapentures, approximately nine vehicles, private and parochial south side routed separate to Saint Columba, approximately fourteen vehicles, exception for Saint Mary's Wapentures, Vishkal, I assume that's Saint Mary's Vishkal, and Saint Columba routed separately. Are those included within the nine and the fourteen, or is this something?
Those three schools basically have exclusive transportation for those, so those vehicles are allotted, so when we were trying to measure to make sure we had enough vehicles for all of the tiers, we took those vehicles into account.
So they're within the nine and the fourteen, among them, and then the other ones are just added to that?
Yes, and then we work those all in together. There are private parochials who do hub, we're not saying that Saint Mary's Wapentures, Vishkal, Saint Columba are hubbing, that is not what we're saying, we're saying that as it currently exists, that's how it will continue for the private parochials in the morning.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions, Mrs. Karat?
Because I missed your presentation last week, I was also interested in the response from the students, the student surveys, how many?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Six point zero four, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, Wapenture Central School District High School State Assessments and Graduation Outcomes.
Before? Before Dr. Cardwell begins, one of the things that I want to share quickly with the Board of Education, is that we purposely are having a high school presentation separate from KPUA. We know that with KPUA, we're also talking about some items that can be viewed as political in scope, in terms of refusals, that percentage, looking at data that is not accurate and protects all of our students because of our refusal rate, so therefore, this, this, this data that you will be receiving really speaks to the participation of all of our students in our district in terms of what you will see here. Thank you, Dr. Cardwell.
Please, Board of Education, before we begin, I would like to thank the help of Darla Thima, who assisted with many of the charts and tables you see in the presentation. So during today's presentation, you will see five-year trends for the mathematics region, science regions, E.L.A. region, social studies region, and advanced placement exam information at John Day High School and Rosy Cation High School. When we look at the mathematics region, this first slide will show you the top graph of the Common Core Algebra is at the top, and then the Integrated Algebra at the bottom. To the Integrated Algebra regions where it says we retired, the last administration of the Integrated Algebra exam was in June 2015. So we are no longer offering Integrated Algebra, it was now for the Algebra One Common Core. If you look, there's a lot of numbers on this slide, but what's important is if you look at where it is district, where 65% to 100%, those are our passing rates. So you will see that our passing rates are currently 86%. What is also important is the line that follows, where 85 to 100%, that's what we consider mastery. And what we are focusing on right now in the Wapenture Central School District, we're not only making sure that our passing rates are high, but that our mastery rate is also Similarly, we have the Common Core Geometry exam, which started in the 1415 school year, that's on the top, and we are now offering the Common Core Geometry exam. We will no longer be offering the Regular Geometry exam. Algebra II Trigonometry, the last administration of the Algebra II Trig exam will be in January 2017. And that's the top graph. The bottom graph is the Common Core Algebra, and last year was the first year that we offered the official Common Core Algebra II exam. We did fairly well with a 91% passing rate. However, we don't have a 12% mastery rate, and we are definitely looking at figuring out how we can increase our mastery rate, and we're very hopeful that the next administration we will have higher resulting mastery. For science, we have, for earth science, our eighth grade students at our Dune High School take the earth science exam, the Uzul line for Van White and Wapenture. We also have their passing rates and their mastery rate identified here. One of the things that we noticed while we are looking at the science data is that there is a slight decline of a few percentage points in living environment, which is the bottom graph. So this lets us know that we need to look at the questions on the exam, because there has been a slight decline in both John Day and E.Cation, just a few percentage points. But any few percentage points raises questions about looking at the exam, the types of questions, and how our students are answering them. You know, what questions the students are answering correctly and what they're answering incorrectly. Once again, always looking at our mastery rate and figuring out how we can improve and increase the number of students that are achieving equality better over the other Chemistry and physics, we do have a lot of students that take these exams. You will notice that for chemistry, we have 522 students that took the exam, and very proud to announce that we have a 93% passing rate. And we have a 32% mastery rate in chemistry. This is slightly higher than the year before, but still gives us some numbers that are a few percentage points lower than 13, 14. So these are just some of the trends that we look at as teachers and as departments to look at reading throughout. For the E.L.A. regions, we have a 93% passing rate and a 66% mastery rate. This is the highest mastery rate of all the regions that we offer in Wapenture Central For global history, when we look at the three-year trend from beginning in 2013, 14, we have a 75% passing rate. It dropped to 72 in 1415 and then increased to 81%. When we look at U.S. history, we see that both John Day and RCK High Schools continue to increase in the mastery level. So we went from the district from a 54% mastery to 59 to 64% pass rate. For advanced placement, this first slide is John Day High School, and then following will be RCK. So any information that you have in front of you, you have a number of students enrolled, the number of students who took the exam, because not all students that are enrolled in the advanced placement courses have to take the exam. And then in order to get college credit, you need to have a minimum score of a three. And so we have outlined the scores for you, how many students received the highest score of five before appearing to a name. Similarly, we have E.L.A. and social studies offered set up in the same way. We offer AP courses in art and foreign language. And I'm going quickly through these slides, because I know that you had an opportunity to look at them previously, and I'm finally will answer questions at the end. And similarly, we have the RCK. The Wapenture Central School District offers approximately 20 AP courses for support. Questions?
In mathematics, I am concerned about the AP level achievement. It's nice that kids are passing the exam, but as you indicated correctly, we have a good gap between 85 and 100, a significant low in the multiple students. That's a new one. Oh, so. Looking at the various results, whether it's Algebra Common Core, whether it's geometry, whether it's Algebra II Trig, I'm concerned about the number. It's good that the people are passing the exams, but I'm also very concerned about the level of achievement. These kids are in a region of some, very few came between 85 and 100. As, and I don't know, I know that we know, right now somebody could look at graduate exams, there's a lot of now that been done and heated questions to why kids might get everything from 500 to 100 in those particular courses. Hopefully, the teachers can in fact see what the weaknesses are, so perhaps can improve on those percentages, and that's across the board. Having them for a, for example, 0% getting between 85 and 100 today is unacceptable. In fact, most schools in Algebra II and Trig in 15, 16, they're at 0% and both getting away from it. That concerns me. So I wish teachers knew exactly what, where they're, which questions kids did not do well, but perhaps they could get a job this year, so next year we can see the results.
Yes, and you are correct in that, when we look at the Algebra II Trigonometry, which is offered in the 15, 16 school year for that exam. I don't know why that turned off, I didn't turn it off. Thank you. We did have 0% on the old exam, which is mastery, but if we do look at the Common Core Algebra exam, which was offered at the same time, just a different exam, we do have slightly high, 12%. I know that is not anything to cheer about, I just wanted to point that out. I have a meeting with the teachers in charge of the mathematics and the science departments. We are holding department meetings at the beginning of the school year during the superintendent's conference day, and have looked at the data, and they have started to do some work. This work is a year-long process, it is ongoing, and the teachers will continue to look at the data under the direction of their teachers in charge, as well as us, in order to look for the trends, to determine what they need to do to improve their instruction, to make sure that they're doing what they're doing.
The sooner that's get done, the better also. So teachers can see what the weaknesses are.
In addition to that, as you know, everyone in the administrative role, they're articulated in the boards. Most schools, Mr. Syke and Mrs. King, their roles are, one of their roles is to, they're identifying that mastery piece and making sure that they're not just graduating students, and they're graduating students and they're passing the regions, but also to evaluate the quality of the regions, and how they're passing the regions. Because according to the state, this is according to the state, whether you recruit or not, the 85% mastery, or whatever the number, the target number mastery means, it means that the student will be successful in a four-year college. So that's the representation of that mastery number. And that's why we want to continue ensuring that we can, that's now the goal. We've seen our graduation rate go up, and now the goal is our graduation rate is going to go up as I spin the ball in five, and making sure that we get more students into mastery. Part two.
I was wondering, looking at the Algebra Trig and the Algebra II Trig versus the Common Core Algebra II, was it that the better students took the Common Core one rather than the Algebra II Trig? Or was it that all the students were being taught for the Common Core course, and some of them took the other exam that maybe didn't cover all the things that the Common Core materialized? Which is it?
Well, it's a combination. We have students that previously took Algebra II Trig the course. They had an opportunity, so they received curriculum based upon the Algebra II Trig class, so they were able to take the old exam. The students who were under the new curriculum were to take the new exam. So theoretically, students who still had to take the Algebra II Trigonometry, most of them were already repeated and had taken it previously.
Thank you, that explains a lot of the zero in the mastery. Yes, Mrs. Goodman?
Congratulations on the pass rate for both the global and the U.S. I believe that they are both higher than the state pass rate, which is, you know, considering that a lot of kids just waltz in and take it cold, that's, you know, even though the teachers review and the teachers they study, a lot of times the kids don't. So the fact that the kids are doing that well is to be commended. I did have a question about the AP, okay? Because I noticed a tremendous swing in some courses where just about every kid who's taking AP is taking the exam, whereas you have other courses, I think physics was my favorite, where only one kid, it was like 69 kids taking AP Physics, and one kid took the exam, who actually did quite well. Can you account for that to me for me? Why that wide range?
I don't have that information yet at this time, but I can definitely look into that.
What I can tell you about physics, just across the board, and Dr. Cardwell correctly run one, because you correct John Day. Many students take the physics course because it's incredibly tough, and what they want is to make sure it's under a hand with the college. And it really becomes difficult for that task, and it's well known that the task is more than spiritual and impossible. But what we, what we, as very, it's very challenging. So that number is significant, because no one's taken it, but they sure take the course, and it's under transfer.
My idea is a thought, quick follow-up. Do you have any colleges that you work with to provide credit instead of using the AP courses?
Yes, we do.
Just actually think that's a fair deal.
Yeah, we offer AP courses, and we offer college-level courses, we purchase community college, and I believe that we're a four-year school.
Really? Yes.
I'll make sure, Fridays, weekdays, I'm not going to.
Mr. Rubin?
Well, thank you for this information, I hope you can tell me this, some of this type of information, I think this is all hitting its bats in your face, and it makes us and everybody who's involved in the education of the students, look at what they're doing and self-analyze and see what they're doing.
I do think that also the AP courses, not all colleges give credit. And a number of them will give credit, but only if you're not, only if there are distribution requirement, not for a major, and they expect them to take the course anyway. But there is a lot of value in taking a tougher course if you can in high school, because you're certainly much better prepared to take the college-level courses. Was that time, okay? Do we want more time?
I apologize.
I think we need to adjust the agendas next time, and make sure we have a little bit more time on some of these discussion items. We can always go under, but it seems we need more time. Do you want, if you have a question?
I'll.
Okay, did you, Mr. Rubin? Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Cardwell. The consent agenda, does anyone have anything they wish to remove from the consent agenda? Mr. Slowshower?
7.06.
Anything else? All right?
Meeting, this is so cheesy for the lady.
Yes.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated, 7.02, 7.03, as amended, 7.04, 7.05, 7.07, and 7.08.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mrs. Pelton, second? Mrs. Goodman, all those in favor? Unanimous? All right. 7.06.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby authorize the Superintendent of Schools to sign the following consultant agreements as stated.
Mr. Slowshower, second? Mr. Galetta, discussion? Mr. Slowshower?
Just have a quick question with regards to the agreement for CTS Language Link. Just doing some basic math. It's 10 hours. My concern is just breaking that down per school, it's maybe 40 minutes or so, is that enough time to handle these types of situations?
Yeah, the, the Language Link, doesn't happen to a lot of these kinds of rare situation? We do run across situations where we have parents come in either for special ed or general led meetings, and we need someone who speaks the native language. It could be someone from Spanish, Italian, German, people, you know, Indian descent, at least we don't have translators. And typically, what this would allow us to do is, in the moment, without having to schedule a meeting, and have someone come in, say, who owns a company, to call this number to a well-known organization, and within 12 seconds, we can have someone to translate the language to 15 languages. So once again, it isn't a big item that happens, but when it does happen, it's, you know.
My, I mean, I think it's a great, great thing, that's, I'm just, my concern was just is breaking it down, just first, is it enough time being allotted, you know, 10 hours to cover the entire district for these types of situations? I feel it's enough.
Yeah, from a request I get from the principals, only a handful of times during the course of the year, each meeting is about 10, 15 minutes.
Our outs will be bad.
Okay. Yes, anything else? Okay, all those in favor? 8.01, approval of Wings of Freedom Student Contest.
I'd like to make a motion that we table, can I make a motion to table right now? I'd like to make a motion that we table this until, say, our first meeting in February, if more research has been done, I just don't have the answers at this point.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Pelton, all those in favor? Everybody, Mr. Rubin?
I am voting.
Okay, okay, everybody, then, unanimous. Oh, you're not voting, no, you don't want to table?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so then that was Mrs. Pelton, Mr. Slowshower, Mrs. Karath, Mr. Rubin, Mrs. Goodman, Mr. Lumia, and Mrs. Callen in favor of tabling, opposed. Mr. Galetta, thank you. Okay. Eight point zero two, approval of revision to committee charters with board members.
Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve a revision to the committee charters with board members to indicate that committees with board members will be comprised of a minimum of two, but no more than three board members, with the board president serving as the unofficial on all committees.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mrs. Pelton, second. Mr. Rubin, all, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Eight point zero three, Duchess County School Boards Association Executive Committee member.
Resolved that, thank you, Callen, be designated as the Wapatchas Central School District's Duchess County Board, Duchess County Boards Association Executive Committee member for the 2016-2017 school year effective October 24, 2016.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mrs. Pelton, second. Mr. Slowshower, just to clarify for everyone, Mrs. Laval was our representative, and since I'm there anyway each month, and Mr. Rubin is there but representing the BOSI's Board, so he can't be our representative, I'm willing to continue doing it and just be the official one, unless someone on the board would like to be our representative, which I would certainly be very happy to have that person be the official one and come along with Mr. Rubin and myself. So is there anybody? It's a once-a-month meeting, first Thursday of the month up at Duchess County BOSI, so if we have a volunteer, we can have that person instead of me, and I'm very happy with that. Do we have a volunteer?
I haven't attended any of those meetings yet, so I'm not sure what's involved.
But you're all welcome to come anyway, any school board member can come, so, you know, if you want to come, and then it's, yeah, Mrs. Karath did it, I did it the year before, and Mr. Rubin did.
Is there any additional duties being on the executive committee of that board beyond attending meetings and reporting?
Yes, Mr. Rubin, go ahead.
None more than you want to, so they may establish committees and they'll ask for volunteers for that, but during certain parts of things, you'll be voting, like you'll vote, they have a budget that they will run, I think it's about 9,000, I'm not even sure they have to hold on a budget. It's, it'll take really about an hour and a half, am I right, Mrs. Karath? About an hour and a half or so.
I can attend meetings if you want.
Okay, if you would like to be our representative, you can.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you would like to be. Okay, fine, okay. So we can amend that, do we need a motion to amend, or can we just?
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend, do we have a second? Mrs. Pelton, all those in favor of amending, so that Mr. Galetta is the representative? All right, all those in favor of Mr. Galetta as our representative, thank you. All right. Nine point zero one, approval of hold harmless agreement with Duchess County Gymnastics.
Resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves of the hold harmless agreement with the Duchess County Gymnastics, a copy of which is on file with the district clerk.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Rubin, second. Mrs. Pelton, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Ten point zero one, are there any additions to the agenda? Mr. Lumia?
I have to make a motion for addition to the agenda to add a resolution regarding the announcement of vacancy.
I'll search.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? All right? More motion?
She passed out. Well, she doesn't. I think I passed on a policy, some things might be changed if this, be resolved, the Board of Education of Wapatchas Central School District does hereby declare a board member vacancy and does hereby announce the process for appointing to vacant position. Be resolved, the district clerk shall immediately post notice of vacancy, which shall include directions regarding applications of legally qualified candidates. Person applying or nominated must meet the qualifications required by district policy for members of the Board of Education. Before resolved that residents wished to be appointed to the vacancies, shall make the decision known by submitting a letter, a signed letter of interest to the district clerk, providing their name, address, background, and reasons for interest in serving on the Wapatchas Central School Board of Education. The Board will accept submissions until 5:00 PM on November 4th, 2016. By 5:00 PM on November 4th, 2016, each board member will have the option to submit one or more questions for the interview process. Board members shall email their questions to the board president with a copy to each board member and to the district clerk. The Board of Education shall call a special meeting of the board on Wednesday, November 9th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. Candidates for the vacant position on the Board of Education will be interviewed at the open session special meeting on November 9th, 2016, at 7:00 PM. The board president or moderator will read the question to each candidate. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to each question, there will be no follow-up questions. The appointment will be made through formal motion and vote at the open session on November 28th, 2016, or soon thereafter as deemed appropriate by the Board of Education.
Okay, do we have a second? Mrs. Pelton, discussion? Mr. Rubin?
Thank you, Madam President. Just clarifying this, because I believe that this is what I heard, that the questions that are submitted and subsequently asked of the candidates, that each candidate will get the same questions. It will not be question one for this one, question two for that one.
I agree 100%, each candidate will get the same.
And that the questions submitted by each, any and all board members, that when they are read, they'll not be identified to a particular board member.
Absolutely, Mr. Rubin. I don't mind identifying my question, that's it, that's okay.
All right, yes, Mrs. Karath.
This is a question for you, Mrs. Pedro, is the vacancy posted in the local newspapers as well, in the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Southern Duchess News?
That would be out of course discussion, how they would like me to post.
When, when...
A normal candidacy, that's legal notice, that's a whole other.
Is that in public notice, that's a public notice in the newspapers?
That's not an requirement, but this, it can be done, but newspapers would get a legal notice, there is a fee associated with that. And two newspapers, Southern Duchess News and the Poughkeepsie Journal.
So I'm wondering if the board is, has any interest in making sure that that announcement of the vacancy goes in the newspaper? Does the board have an interest in having a motion, this motion amended to add? I make a motion to amend this amendment to include the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Southern Duchess News to post the vacancy and the dates, pertinent dates that were just read.
Do we have a second? Mr. Lumia, all those in favor? Unanimous? Okay, so that is added to it? No, because we might have other discussion and amendments, so it's not, Mrs. Goodman, I think I saw Mrs. Goodman's hand.
Further to what Trustee Karath said, I'd like to make sure that we make every effort to let people know that we are accepting applications for this vacancy, and I'm not quite sure what that would include. I don't know whether that's something that Ms. Watkins can get involved in as the PR person, I don't really know, or is it up to us to decide how we want to publicize it?
Okay, Mrs. Pelton?
Would it help if we had the emails sent out to everybody?
That's a, that's a great idea.
Okay, would it be sent out?
I don't think you can.
No?
I think, one of the things you have to make sure is that you're giving everyone equal opportunity to receive the message, so we don't have emails for the entire Longview's community. So therefore, Trustee Karath's recommendation, going on our website, things of that nature on our social media, that allows for people independently to take a look at it. The minute that we, we don't want to utilize board funds to do an additional newsletter as we do twice a year, that would cost a lot of money. So, but we will be sure that every opportunity, the same way we do with the budget, every which way that we can provide that information.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Slowshower?
Just to piggyback on Mr. Karath, I believe, and, this, Pedro, it's a public notice, correct? That we must do public notice, a website and legal public notice.
But this wouldn't need a legal notice, I would, I would consult the attorneys for what I can put in the newspaper for application.
Obviously, the website is sufficient enough for now, and then pending legal approval for language for the newspaper.
Exactly.
Okay, and I'm assuming we're going to incur cost, do we need to, you know, improve the cost of the ad, or we don't have to do that? Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have a concern about us only giving less than two weeks from now until the submission, and I'm wondering if an additional week would be better, because it should be between, that would give between two and three weeks, because people, first of all, have to hear about it, and not everybody checks the website of the Wapatchas School District every day, nor do they necessarily read the legal notices. So, and then to decide if they have the time, desire, and commitment at this point, because this isn't, for next year, this is right away, and then finally to write an appropriate resume and submit it. So I was wondering if we would like to give a little more time, and, yes, so I'm going to make an amendment to that, yes, to that effect, that's what I'm doing, Mr. Rubin, thank you. Okay, so I would like to amend it, to give an additional week, and to make each of those dates one week later than they are, than they were stated, so that would be November 11th for submission, both of applications and of board member questions, and have the special meeting on the 16th rather than the 9th, with the proviso that all board members can attend, which I think is important for both, both the possible dates, whether it was the 9th or the 16th. And, but that the open session, and I would also like to amend it, that the vote would be taken on that night after discussion and executive session. The questioning would of course be a public meeting, everybody was welcome to come and listen, and then after discussion and executive session, a public vote that night on November 16th. That's my amendment. There's a second?
I have a second.
Mrs. Karath seconded, all those in favor? Mrs. Karath and Mrs. Callen, so it's defeated. Mrs. Goodman?
I just want to point out that November 11th is Veterans Day, I assume the district is closed, so I'm not sure that November 11th is the, I think everything else is fine, but the reason I didn't vote for it is if you change the amendment to November 10th.
Okay, I want to try November 10th? Okay, so I make a motion that it be November 10th for the deadline for the submission, and perhaps we'd better do it two separate things about whether, about the final vote versus the extension of time for the applications. So, new amendment to accept submissions until November 10th, and board questions till November 10th, and have a special meeting of the board on Wednesday, November 16th, at which time the candidates will be interviewed at an open session special meeting. All right, all those, do I have a second for that one? Mrs. Goodman, all those in favor? Mrs. Karath, Mrs. Goodman, and Mrs. Callen, so that one fails. Okay, I would also like then to make another amendment, that we have hold the vote at the same meeting as the public hearing, which would be Wednesday, November 9th. Do I have a second for that one? Mrs. Pelton, discussion? All those in favor? Discuss, go ahead, Mrs. Slowshower. All those in favor? Just one, Mrs. Callen, Mrs. Karath, did you vote for that too? And Mrs. Karath, all those opposed, everybody else? Okay, so that one fails, so thank you. Is there any further discussion or amendments to this? Okay, all those in favor? Yes, with the amendments that it was, that were approved, all those in favor? Unanimous? Are there any other additions to the agenda? Okay, being none. Eleven point zero one, comments from the public. At this time, you may speak about anything that is related to school, district business. Seeing none, one, do we have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Lumia, second. Mrs. Pelton, all those in favor? Unanimous?